The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of November 6, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of this city. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda, nor have we received speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. And next item now.
Closed session, item 4A, conference with real property negotiators for property located at 2157 to 2221 Mohawk Street.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
And we adjourn to closed session. Are you a CSUB or VC student? Yes. Well, this is a very short meeting, and we go into closed session, so unfortunately, it's not going to count for your class, but if you'd like to come back at 5:15, we'll have our regular meeting. All right, well, thank you for being here. What school did you go to? VC? Professor Holmes? All right, well, we'll see you later or on another day. Sorry.
Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the county of Kern, and the city of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 10:00 a.m., and the following Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular city council meeting of November 6, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the pleasure of hosting the 68th Annual Teen Government Day. Eighty students from the Kern High School District met with departments throughout the city earlier in the day. Joining us tonight are some of the students who participated in this day of learning. So at this point, I'm going to invite each student to introduce yourself, state your name, and then tell us a little bit about yourself. So we'll just start right there at the end. Ward one.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Cruz Rivera. I attend Deloro High School. And some of my college goals, I'm either between a psychology or a human biology major. I have received a 4.6 GPA, and I'm a current science fair participant. At schools, some of the school activities I participate in are ASB senior president. I am my school's newspaper's sports editor. I do track and field, cross-country cheerleading. I am in the California Scholarship Federation. I'm an active member of school site council, the outdoor club, mariachi band and orchestra. Some of my hobbies include running, writing, and music, and I'm also a member of the Four Dream Builders.
Thank you. And we'll have our next student.
Hi, my name is Thomas Woods. I go to Bakersfield High School, and my goal in college is to major in finance and economics with a minor in political science, or political science replaces finance. My career goal is to become an investment banker, transition to being a CEO of a financial literacy app, and to empower youth, then becoming an economist for the government, becoming an economic policy analysis, analytic, sorry. My cumulative GPA is a 4.427. I've had principal's lists all four years of high school. I've gotten the American foundation for community outreach, Bank of America student leader. I'm a talent show grand prize winner for rapping. Check me out on Spotify. And I got the fourth place in the National Virtual Enterprise Finance Competition. Some school activities that I do is I am ASB president, president of Bakersfield Economics Club, president of National Honor Society. I'm a virtual enterprise finance officer. And some hobbies and interests, I love to read, especially books on economics, psychology, and politics. I love to play tennis in my spare time and drop some bars. Community service that I'm a part of is Four Dream Builders. I'm a four-dimensional student. I'm a Children First Student Board Member. I'm a Leaders in Life Executive on the development team, and I'm part of the Youth Commission, and I was a Children First intern over the summer, and I developed a school, a school back-to-school supplies drive that gave 75 backpacks to kids in East Niles. Thank you.
Well, welcome, council member. And now from Ward four.
Hi, my name's Abigail Snyder. I'm a student at Centennial. My college goal is to attain a bachelor's degree in physiology or biological sciences with the intention of going into a career in orthopedic medicine. My GPA is a 4.5, and I'm an AP scholar, a four-year member of California Scholarship Federation, and I'm a member of the Bakersfield College Early College. I play varsity soccer and golf at Centennial. I'm the ASB president, a link crew commissioner. I'm a member of the Science National Honor Society, National Honor Society, and also our chemistry club. Some of my hobbies outside of school, I love working out, traveling, hanging out with my friends. I spend a lot of time playing sports and at school. I also love to read. One of my biggest, our community service project is through my club, the Science National Honor Society, and we have worked with the Valley Fever Project in swabbing samples and trying to find active strains throughout the city.
Welcome, council member. And now our mayor.
Hello, everybody. My name is Alberta Bod. I go to Stockdale High School. My college goal is UCLA or UCI, where I plan to study medicine. My career goal is to be a pediatrician. I have a 4.5 GPA, top Scholar-Athlete Award, and I have received the Mustang Pride Award. For school activities, I am the ASB president, PACRIM president, National Honor Society member, Spanish Honor Society member, tunicling dance leader, K-pop dance leader. I've been in orchestra for four years. I played baseball for two years, connection project leader, and I'm also a Blood Drive ambassador. My hobbies and interests, I love dancing, singing, playing video games, learning, and studying astronomy, medicine. I also love fashion and solving Rubik's cubes. For community service, I'm a National Honor Society member, Spanish Honor Society member, Blood Drive ambassador. I was the Smiles Across Miles vice president last year, and I'm also part of the Four Dream Builders.
Welcome, Mayor Abad. And now Vice Mayor Ward two.
Hello, my name's Gloria Eustace, and I'm currently a senior at Shafter High School. After high school, I have planned on attending a college to major in biology and pursue orthodontics, and I also would love to continue my involvement in student government. I'm a recipient of Honor Roll, CSF, and the Multiple Scholar-Athlete Awards. I'm involved in ASB as the president, Track and Field, Interact, Every 15 Minutes, Dreams Over Drugs, College Bound, Key Club, and FCA. Some of my hobbies include patentry, where I've received the titles Miss Shafter and Miss Lavender. I'm a photographer as well as a runner. I am actively involved in community service as a Shafter High Learning Center volunteer, ribbon-cutting honoree, community outreach at feeder schools, and Dreams Over Drugs acupuncturist. Thank you.
Welcome, council member. And now, Ward five, council member.
Hi, my name is Sydney Van Fossen. I am a senior at Foothill High School. After high school, I plan to go to college and study business to become a marketing manager. I currently have a 4.0 GPA, honors rolls all four years, National Honor Society, and I'm the Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kern County and Coastal California. I am the ASB president at Foothill, as well as I'm involved in Varsity Cheer, a member of the Trojan Advocacy Center. I am the president and founder of the Ecology Club, the historian for the Bible Club, the social media manager for the Pause for a Clause Club. I am a part of the Equity Team and a member of the School Site Council. Some of my interests is I like to film and edit videos, go outside, go to the lake, hiking, everything outdoors like that. As for community service, through the Ecology Club, I've done many cleanups at our campus as well as at local parks. I am a member of the Got the Dot Club. I am a Bakersfield junior at for the Women's Club, and I am a member of the California Association of Student Councils.
Welcome, council member Van Fossen. And the next one, Ward six.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Anton Giovanni. I'm a student at Garsus Memorial High School. My college goal is to receive a BFA in musical theater and hopefully make it to Broadway. So my GPA is a 4.82 academic GPA. Some honors include CSF honors, NHS honors, and a PLTW scholar. I am the co-president of Garsus ASB, the president of Garsus Engineering and PLTW, the activities director of the Italian Heritage Club. I'm also a member of the Garsus Trauma Club. I have all four years in Garsus Band, two-year link crew leader and Rambassador. I am also the head of Garsus Sports Media and Broadcasting. Some hobbies include performing regularly at the Ovation Theater, and my community service includes building and painting sets, graphic designs, monitoring auditions at Ovation Theater. I participate in the yearly Angel Basket Project with St. Francis Parish School, which I have done for over 10 years, and I'm a volunteer and referee with the Kern Youth Rugby Program.
Welcome, council member Anton Giovanni. And now for Ward seven.
Good evening. My name is Von Forsyth. I'm a student at Independence High School. Some of my college goals include attending a four-year university, hopefully Stanford or USC, where I plan to study law, engineering, or potentially political science. At school, I have a 4.5 GPA. I'm currently first in my class, and I've received academic excellence all my years of high school. I'm an AP scholar, and I've been a four-time CSF member. I'm also a member of NHS and Spanish Honor Society. Within school, I participate in activities such as debate. I'm in our associate student body. I'm a president of the Energy Academy, and I'm team captain of our robotics club. I'm a founder of the club Nerd Network, and that leads into my hobbies. I like a lot of nerdy hobbies. I play games, board games, video games, things like Magic, Warhammer. I also love to play basketball, and one of my favorite things I've always loved is dinosaurs. One of the things I do in the community is I'm a member of Four Dimension. I do a lot through my church, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. I'm a member of the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, and the United Nations Club.
Welcome, council member. And now, Madam City Attorney.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yahira Naomi Mata. I am a senior attending Ridgeview High School, and currently I maintain a 4.5 GPA and rank first in my class. I actively engage in several clubs where I hold leadership roles, such as serving as treasurer for the Spanish Honor Society. I am also the finance lead for the Graphic Arts Program, the social media manager for the Friends Foundation Club, and this year I stepped into the role of chief operating officer, or the COO, in the virtual enterprise program. And I'm also involved in Link Crew and the Valley Strong Program. Beyond my current involvement, I have built a foundation of leadership, networking, and involvement throughout my high school journey. I have been a co-president of the FCA Club, event commissioner for the Medical Club, and I have prioritized community service through the Kiwanis Club and various church events. Last year, I began the virtual enterprise program as a marketing manager, progressed as the vice president of marketing, now the COO, and we placed top 20 in the nation for business plan. I have also participated in the science fair. In science fair, my freshman year, and earned third place in Kern County for plant biology. Additionally, I served as a JV captain for the soccer team, and I have also, oh, I'm looking ahead, I plan to pursue a college education in the medical field and/or business with aspirations to create a positive impact in my community and make meaningful, a meaningful difference. With that said, my hobbies and interests include soccer, graphic design, public speaking, marketing, finance, volunteering, entrepreneurship, learning, and much more. Thank you.
Welcome, Madam City Attorney. And now for our city manager.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angel Gallardo Aguilar. I am a senior at East Bakersfield High School. My college goal is to earn my PhD in economics, hopefully from Stanford or USC, and then with that, I hope to become an economist for the federal board. My current GPA is a 4.438, and some honors that I have received, I currently am a finalist of the Quest Bridge National College Match. I'm a Four Dream Builder, and I've been recognized by Dartmouth and Williams College as a scholar of their schools. Some school activities that I participate are as Interact Club. I serve as the president. I also serve on my ASB's executive board. I run Varsity Cross Country, and I am the captain of the East Bakersfield Varsity Tennis Team. I also co-founded the Honor Flight Club of East Bakersfield High School, and I also participate in NHS and CSF. On my spare time, I enjoy playing tennis, and then when I'm not playing tennis, I like going out and trying new foods. And then some community service that I partake in, I lead and participate in projects through Interact, Honor Flight, National Honor Society, Four Dream Builders, and I'm also a previous intern of the Children First nonprofit.
Welcome, City Manager Gallardo. And now for our Director of Development Services.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Sanchez. I go to Foothill High School. My college goal is to hopefully attend a four-year college where I can become a psychologist and help kids with trauma. My current GPA is a 4.2, and some activities I'm involved in is ASB. I am the senior class president. I'm the president and founder of the Pause for a Clause Club, and I'm vice president for the Orchestra Club, social media manager for Ecology Club. I'm a part of the Advocacy Center, and I'm vice president for our School Site Council. Some hobbies that interest me are playing the violin, which I've been doing since I was seven years old. I like to play in the mariachi orchestra. I enjoy helping animals. I draw, paint, film, and edit, and a big interest of mine is speech and debate, and I also enjoy going on sunset walks. Along with that, some of community services, I cleaned the parks before with our Ecology Club. We've painted the Hart Park trash cans. I teach kids at elementary schools violin and singing lessons, and I'm a huge helper at our catechism classes, and I'm also a part of the migrant program.
Welcome, Director Sanchez. And now for our Public Works Director.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brayden Mindaburo, and I'm a senior at Liberty High School. In my future career, I hope to pursue a career as a White House correspondent or a political pundit, and I hope to study political science at Columbia University or, like everyone else, Stanford. A few of my significant honors are, I have a 4.5 GPA. I have two congressional recognitions from two different members of the House of Representatives, as well as from two different members of the California State Senate, and I'm also first in class at Liberty. I'm also the captain of our Varsity Mock Trail Team and our president of our We the People program. I also preside over our ASB as ASB president. I'm a long-distance swimmer for the Liberty Swim Team, and I'm involved in the Four Dream Builders and Four Dimension programs. I've been bass dancing at the Kern County Bass Club for the past 13 years, and I also serve on the Youth Commission as the mayor's mayoral appointee, and I'm also the vice mayor of the commission. In my free time, I, when I can, I like to sleep, but I don't get much of that nowadays, and I also like to write film reviews. In the community, I'm involved with a few nonprofits. I'm the social media manager for my family's nonprofit, the Mindaburo Magic Foundation, as well as for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Team Shooting for a Cure. I'm also involved with Marley's Mutts, the Borgerman-Forsman-Lehman Syndrome Foundation, as well as Liberty ASB's nonprofits that we like to work with, so.
Welcome, Director Mindaburo. And for our final student, Mr. Clerk.
Good evening. My name is Samuel Yeni, and I'm a senior at Frontier High School. I hope to attend a four-year university and hopefully work in public health or become an immunologist. I currently have a 4.5 GPA. I'm an AKA top scholar. I've received National College Board recognition, and I've been a part of Kern County Honor Band since my freshman year. I'm currently a part of NHS Project Best, and I'm currently vice president of Interact at my school. I've been part of marching band for the past four years. I'm currently band president, and I've been saxophone section leader for the past two years, and I'm also of our Spanish Honor Society, and I'm on the Varsity Boys Tennis Team. I love listening and reading, and also playing and listening to music. I roller skate, and I like to watch movies a lot when I can. I currently am planning a community service project with Four Dream Builders. I'm on the Kern Youth Literacy Council. I work with volunteers around different schools in the KHSD district through Kern Volunteers United, and I volunteered with several organizations through my school's Interact Club.
Welcome, Mr. City Clerk. And aren't we in great, great hands with these wonderful students? Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much, students. Hope you have enjoyed your day, and we're grateful for your participation in the civic process. So as we approach Veterans Day, want to take a moment to thank our men and women currently serving in the armed forces, as well as our veterans and those who paid the ultimate sacrifice to protect our precious freedom. Thank you so much to all of you. So at this time, we get to have the privilege of having one of our veterans, Mr. Rick Knight, who's also a docent at the Portrait of a Warrior Gallery, Portrait of a Warrior Gallery, who will offer the invocation. He's a U.S. Marine Corps veteran and served as an infantry combat marine during the Vietnam War, where he served in a province and the Laotian border. He was awarded the Bronze Star with a V for valor and a Purple Heart for injuries suffered in combat. He's also our trauma chaplain with Honor Flight and a docent for the Portrait of a Warrior Gallery. Thank you so much for your dedicated service. And then following the invocation, Jose Lopez, who is a veteran, and he is also our Kern County Veteran Services Officer. He'll lead us in the pledge. Jose is a U.S. Army veteran deployed to Iraq in 2006. He earned two Army Commendation Medals and an Army Achievement Medal and a Combat Action Badge. He was appointed in 2023 as a Kern County Veteran Services Officer after having served the department for more than five years. Thank you so much, Jose, for your support of our veterans and assisting them and their families, and then applying and receiving the services earned by the veterans for their honorable military service. Thank you so much. And at this time, would you all please stand?
All I can say is thank you, dear Lord. Thank you for our freedoms and liberties here in America. Thank you for our public school systems that are teaching our children to be our next fold of leaders. Lord, I just praise and thank you for raising us up in a country that has a constitution based on your word, Father God, on your will and your ways. You know, Lord, as the meeting commences, we just, we want to pray that you would please lead us in the deliberations and our decisions tonight, maybe, and in our discussions that we have. Lord, you've provided us with a wonderful city and community and our public servants. Our citizens are provided with comfort and safety and many other attributes. Bless this gathering, this day, and God bless America. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your hands over your heart. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. And would you like to introduce your two helpers?
Thank you. To my left, I have Ruby Lopez, a first grader at Veterans Elementary, and on my right, I have Ruben Lopez, a fifth grader at Veterans Elementary also. They came to make sure I didn't forget the words.
Well, welcome and thank you for helping. And thank you so much to both of you for your service to our country. And so at this time, I'm going to have Mayor Abad offer some guidelines.
Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentation portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city.
Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts a meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
In keeping with the council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you are here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or a matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for non-agenda public statements. If you are here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item speak, public statements. If you are here to speak on an item listed in the agenda, I will call on you at a later time, so please listen carefully.
If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on items listed under Consent Calendar, item seven, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker is given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on Consent Calendar Hearing, item 8A or B, or New Business, item 12A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers regarding items listed on Consent Calendar, item seven?
Mayor Go, we've received five speaker cards regarding Consent Calendar, item seven. The first public speaker is Delina Wilson, followed by Sandra Melgoza, followed by Ash Hung.
Welcome. Would the first speaker please come up here?
Delina Wilson. Sandra Melgoza.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Sandra Melgoza Placencia, and I am a current policy advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Leadership Council, our partner organizations, and community leaders join you today to urge the city council to pull Agenda Item 7E5 for a continuance to the next city council meeting, to allow for a public discussion and provide the community an opportunity to discuss the use of this additional funding. We have continuously advocated for a right to counsel program that will educate tenants on their rights and provide legal counsel for tenants. As the eviction prevention pilot program is currently being executed, we ask that before allocating additional funds to the EPP, council open the floor for a public discussion of the implementation to date, so that as a community, we can identify needs and opportunities based on what is learned. We urge you to keep a focus. We urge you to keep a focus on what is really needed in our community, making sure people stay housed. The community is asking for funds to be used for tenant rights education. While information on the eviction process is important, knowing your rights as a tenant is key to ensuring that tenants can properly and legally protect themselves from slum lords. Funding should be used solely for tenant support. Currently, over 70% of landlords have representation in Kern County while less than 2% of tenants do in courts. Providing resources for landlords will further widen this already existing gap. We urge you to pull Item 7E5 for a continuance to allow space for public discussion. Lastly, Leadership Council stands in solidarity with our colleagues from the ACLU, asking the city council to remove the ban on public sleeping and camping. With shelters running at capacity and limited preventative measures, enacting this ban is inhumane and will further traumatize and displace houseless individuals. We urge you to remove this ban and invest in preventative and permanent housing solutions instead of further criminalizing our homeless neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melgoza. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Ash Hung, followed by Rosa Lopez, followed by Wendell Wesley Jr.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, council members and teen council members. My name is Ash Huang. I live in Ward 5 and I'm a fellow at the ACLU Southern California. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 7C1. I urge city council to reject the changes to the ban on public sleeping ordinance and to reconsider having this ordinance at all. Punishing sleeping in public makes it harder to get housed and it should have no place in our community. The proposed changes to this ordinance frame the presence of unhoused people in public as a health and safety hazard instead of what it really is, a necessity. The number of people living without shelter in Kern has increased 64% over last year, with 340 people becoming unhoused for the first time. This far outpaces the availability of affordable housing and it will continue to outpace available shelter spots until this underlying need for more housing is met. Bans on sleeping and camping thus punish people who are trying to meet their basic need for sleep and have no other options. Without a dignified and permanent place for people to land, all these ordinances do is move people from block to block. These ordinances go against best practices and federal guidance for a reason. These bans make it harder for people to exit houselessness and they can worsen public health and safety. Forced movement separates unhoused people from caseworkers, resources and important property. It worsens health outcomes and causes depression, anxiety and sleep deprivation. Getting ticketed even once can wipe out what little money unhoused people have saved, creating a vicious cycle of tickets, fines and jail time. I ask the council to reconsider the amended proposal and the need for an anti-camping and anti-sleeping ban here at all. Our city will only prosper if we can ensure that everyone in our community, including people who are unhoused, have access to health, safety and dignified housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Huang. Next speaker, please.
Rosa Lopez, followed by Wendell Wesley Jr.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Rosa and I'm a long-term resident of Ward 2. I'm also a long-term advocate of the community and I work for various, I support various coalition efforts and I work for the ACLU office. I came out today, even though it's a heavy day for me and for many of us that are fighting to create a better community and a better world for everyone and hear it locally. But I'm here to ask that you reject the amendments to the proposed ordinance that amends the sleeping in public space ordinance and ask that you cancel the ordinance altogether. As the previous speakers have mentioned, this ordinance does not address the real issue of the access to affordable housing. Since implementation of this ordinance, we've seen an unhoused population increase. More than 2,000 of our neighbors are unhoused. Why? Because we continue to waste funds, pushing them out of our sight and criminalizing them for being poor. What the community truly needs is investment in affordable housing and according to the point in time count, about 40% of our unhoused population interviewed attributed their houselessness to job loss or increase in rent. So what we need is affordable housing and other alternatives to living in public places, not this ordinance that criminalizes people and fines them of up to 250 for a criminal infraction and up to $1,000 for administrative citation. What this ordinance do is create a dangerous rhetoric around our house communities, that rhetoric that can cause real harm to us and them. We are better than this. We can do better and we can create real solutions to this human crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. And next speaker, please.
Wendell Wesley Jr.
Welcome.
Hi, council and young adult council, staff. So let me see. It sounds like we have a rigged system here. You know, we don't build enough homes and now people don't have no place to sleep. And so now we're going to find them and criminalize them? Doesn't seem fair and we know it's not right. We need to bring the people here, the citizens, back to the table to find real solutions. Just thinking of ways to just get rid of people on the street, put them in prisons, jail or whatever, you know, and these are for profit and all they're guilty of is just not having a place to lay their head. So the eviction prevention program was something that was meant to keep people housed. So we really need to find solutions of keeping people housed. We appreciate the extra $100,000, but we really need $2 million. And on top of that, GBLA right now, at this point in time, has not been able to effectively really keep people housed. If someone goes and robs a bank, they have a public defender. But if someone's getting evicted, they don't have an attorney. So we really need that $2 million, you know? This is a legal right that everybody should have and there's such a huge disparity here for penalizing someone for maybe a rent dispute that may not even be their fault and they don't even get an attorney versus someone that robs a bank that gets an attorney. So we need to find real solutions. We can fix this, but you need to bring us to the tables. We actually have real solutions that'll work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you very much. So this concludes this section of the meeting. Students, at this point, I'll invite you to either join the audience or you're welcome to go home and keep doing your homework so you can continue with your 4.8 GPAs and cure cancer while you're also doing everything else. Congratulations on your achievement. What just wonderful students we have here. We're so proud to have you here. You'll be able to watch yourself forever. From 10 years from now, if you want to turn on the Baker, City of Bakersfield's channel, you'll see yourself up here. But all the best to all of you from the City of Bakersfield. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding Item 7C, transmitting additional correspondence.
Thank you. Colleagues, I didn't receive any requests for recusal. Does anybody want to recuse? And then we have a request from Councilmember Gray to pull Item 7E9.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor.
That'll come later.
Oh, sorry. You're calling on me.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 7E9.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. And now we'll consider Item 7E9. Councilmember Gray.
Now it's my turn. Thank you. Anyway, I just wanted to again speak on behalf of the council. I'm sure they would all agree with me that what outstanding students we had tonight and what a pleasure it was. That was so much fun. I wish we could do that every week, doggone it. Brings a whole different element to our city council meetings. Well, tonight I'm pulling this item in hopes that I can give encouragement as to how we can approach this process of reimagining and designing MLK Park where it's a win-win for everyone, the city, the community, the taxpayers and so forth. And so what I'm talking about, for those of you that don't know what I'm talking about, let me find it on here real quick, is revising, it's an amendment to revise not to exceed $5,761,556 for construction management for Phase A, B and C for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center and Park revitalization project in Ward 2. And so as I was going through this and thinking about it from the experience that I've had as a businesswoman and owning a design-build company, I just wanted to bring something to the table for some thought. And so I'm going to just read what I, in thinking, because I think I can better express it that way rather than just right off the top of my head. So I want to say, first of all, that I am in favor of updating and renovating the MLK Park, but I'm not in favor of the process that we're trying to pass through this evening. And I'm going to, I'm going to explain why. I feel that this additional spending of $5,589,566 at this time is premature until a budget is nailed down to design the project, too. So let me explain why. For the past 21 years, my husband and I owned a design-build company where our customers would come in to discuss their kitchen or bathroom remodel. Obviously, we're talking about a much bigger project when we're talking about an 80 to $100 million project that's been talked about and discussed than what we ever built. But the same principle that we practiced in our business also applies to what we're trying to accomplish with MLK Park. Our process would start out by discussing what our client was wanting to accomplish and why. Then we would delve into what their wants and needs look like, their dream, and then before taking out a tape measure and putting pen to paper, we would identify what their budget was. After hearing their dream, we would then explain the reality within the budget that they had set aside. Sometimes their budget was right, right on for their dream and would cover all the bells and whistles and more. And other times, their budget was too low to cover their wants, but maybe, excuse me, above their needs and their dream needed to be realigned to their budget. The question then was, do you want to increase your budget or realign your dream to the budget? I think any homeowner sitting in the audience tonight would understand what I'm talking about. The budget needs to come first. In this case of MLK Park, I do understand there's been some realignment of the dream, but as far as I understand, we still don't have a solid line drawn in the sand when it comes to our budget because we still don't know exactly, we have some kind of an idea of it, but exactly where all the monies are coming from or how much. We have a lot of hopes, but our bank account is not fully funded at this point. I am very much concerned that if we spend almost $6 million for design costs and construction management that includes everything that the community wants, the dream and the needs, this will raise the expectation of the community that we can afford all of it. Then if we get pricing beyond what we can afford, we will disappoint the community, waste taxpayer funds designing something we can't afford. It's the same concept as if we asked our young children or children what they would want versus what we can afford to give them. We would never ask them if they want a Maserati if we can't afford to give them a Maserati, right? We don't want to disappoint them with less than their expectations. So tonight, I'm encouraging our council and staff to first start with a solid budget by identifying the money. Raise the funds, begin the process of designing to that budget. I feel that this is a wise planning, especially for a large taxpayer expenditure, whether the monies come from state funds, federal funds, private funds, city funds, we need to be good stewards of what we receive, of the funds we receive. So I'd like to end my comments with this, which I consider great wisdom, out of Luke 14:28 and 29. And the Bible says, "For which of you intending to build a tower does not first sit down and estimate the cost to see whether he has enough to complete it? Otherwise, when he has laid a foundation and is not able to finish, all who see it will begin to ridicule him." I am concerned that this project could become a black eye to our city if we do not properly enter into it with the funding that we need to finish the project. Let's design the project to the budget instead of the opposite of that. So in that, I will make a motion to oppose 7E9 at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Gray, thank you so much for those comments. I think it's important for us to recognize some of the things that you brought up. I think it's really important, and I agree with you, not to disappoint the community. There are many high hopes for this community facility. It is long overdue and there are many, many, many residents and community members who are looking forward to this facility and it's incumbent upon us on this dais and upon City Hall and city staff to find the resources necessary to make this project happen. I also agree with you that it is important for us to make sure that we have a budget and making sure that we have funding, and I believe we do. In fact, I want to ask City Manager Clegg if you can give us a total number and the number of federal and state grants that we've currently received for this particular project.
Councilmember Gonzalez, I'll do my best. Mayor and council, we have a $2 million direct allocation that has come from the state. We have a $10.9 million federal grant from National Parks. And we have identified ARPA funding. I wouldn't call those grant monies, but we've identified almost $6 million in ARPA funding. And I'll ask Assistant City Manager Rick Anthony or Darren Boudak if they want to add if I've missed any items there.
Good evening, Rick Anthony, Assistant City Manager. That is correct. One correction, it was actually 11.9 for the federal grant as well as, I believe, an approximate investment already from the city of about $10 million. So obviously, that's not all of the funding, but we do actually have a budget that the city manager has kind of drawn the line in the sand as we went through the process. We made some amendments on the design. We removed some administrative facilities. So we have made it clear all along that this is the amount that we are comfortable with. And there's also some other options in terms of phasing that we're considering as well to make sure that we're prepared when it's time to go out for bid.
And for the benefit of the public, we're talking about both the community center and the park at this point?
Yes.
But we have the option to take on the park facility alone and save the community center for a future iteration?
That is correct. The federal funds from the National Park Service is actually designated just for the West Side, which consists of all the outdoor facilities.
And what's the total amount projected cost for the park facility?
The outdoor facility is approximately around $23 million.
And currently, we have roughly $29, maybe $30 million.
Including the matches.
Including the matches, already designated.
Yes.
So we have more than enough dollars than today to facilitate the construction of the park?
We've identified those dollars, yes.
We have identified them, okay. And, you know, one of the lessons I learned during the whole trip program is that oftentimes we do see costs escalate over time, and we have to address those costs. But also, we realized, and additional awards, because we had a shovel-ready project, we had smart folks on the project who were able to save costs, and we went from, when I first got on the council, having to borrow over $100 million to not having to borrow a single dime for that particular project, for the Centennial Corridor, because of the state and federal dollars. And so the point I want to make to the council and to the community is that by actually going forward, moving forward with this particular item, moving this project into complete design, we are setting ourselves up, positioning ourselves as a city, to go after additional funding, perhaps additional federal and state funds, so that we can actually fully fund the project, including the rec center. By being shovel-ready, we actually become more competitive for future projects. How would you respond to that? Is that tracking with you?
Yeah, our consultant is very aware of our budget. We've made that clear all along, and all of the plans and the designs thus far have been in those parameters. This new, our Griffin Construction is also very aware of our targets, and they actually are helping us to even identify continuing requests for grants. So this is going to be, throughout the project, ongoing grant applications, ongoing opportunities for some giving, some funding opportunities, and we're meeting and talking with folks almost on a weekly basis in terms of building some momentum to contribute to this project.
Great. Thank you so much. I'd like to move approval of the amendment.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. It seems like deja vu all over again. We had discussions, numerous discussions, about we should phase the project, build the park first, raise the money, and since the building was so much more expensive, we should wait till we have funds and at least design and bid before we build a building. And I think everybody agrees with that, and goes to your point, too, Patty. And it seems to me that we're following along those lines that I was advocating. I don't think anybody argued against me, that we need to raise the money. We even approved, I think it was an ARPA, correct me wrong, we had to get some, five or six million, we had to get into design phase or we lose the money, which is part of the 20 million for the park, or if it's 30, I hope it's closer to 20. But I appreciate that you did pull it off the agenda and that Councilman Gonzalez reminded us all and brought us up to speed where, because I don't think all of us knew the detail of the grants that are available right now. So I think that gives everybody some comfort that, and actually, comfort and some excitement that we have the money to build the park, parked, okay? So given that we have the money and we have this ARPA deadline, which probably ended this year, I'm in favor of moving forward with this first phase of the park with the caveat that, or condition that we sort of agreed, we won't begin a building until we at least have the money for each part of that building, i.e. the design engineering, yeah, pay for that, stop, bid it, watch the building and the cost, cost of year, and keep moving forward. And I don't see how we could do it really any other way. So given that and the explanation we just got, I'm of support of the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
I appreciate you, Mr. Anthony, coming and clarifying. My greatest fear when we first started talking about this was, it was a whole lot of money, and there wasn't any real commitments financially, and did it even come up at one time to, you know, take a loan out to go into debt for part of it? And I was definitely in disagreement. So I'm glad to hear the update because this has been bugging me. All I had was on the administrative report, we're spending another almost $6 million, and no update as to what's going on, what we've received, or not to where we've had a conversation like this. So I can get behind if you have the money to do the park, and then we're not going to start tearing buildings down and getting in the middle of something when we're not ready for that phase of it. So anyway, again, it's a matter of being good stewards of the dollars that we have, and so I will withdraw my opposition to it if we are staying in the guidelines and we're building to the budget, all right? That's what I want to see happen. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. There was a number thrown out, 80 to 100 million, and I remember hearing that early, but Mr. Anthony mentioned that we did cut out administrative offices and stuff. What is the general budget goal at this point?
The budget goal is, originally, we came to council and said, we think it's about 80, 85 million. And then the fear was, you know, 80, 85 turns into 100 quickly, but I told our staff to target 80. I will tell the council that, you know, just with given inflation or the life of this project, I'm thinking more like 85, but I asked staff to hold the line there, and if we have to value engineer. And he mentioned some of the biggest items that we did, but there's actually been a fairly long list of adjustments that we've made in the design to keep at that $80 million price tag.
And also, this design contract, does it include the community center also?
It does.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. So we have a motion to approve the amendment. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar, public hearings, items 8A through 8B for approval.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under the consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. So at this time, I'll open consent calendar, public hearing, items 8A through B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only the time to remove the matter from the consent calendar hearing.
Mayor Go.
Yes.
I have received one speaker card from Dave Demahowski.
Thank you. Mr. Demahowski.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I don't intend to have the item polled, but I did want to make a comment on the general issue of impact fees, if I could. Is this the proper time to do that, or at the...
Well, we could do it after council's presentation. No, there's not going to be anyone, so go ahead.
Okay, yeah, quickly. By the way, my GPA was 2.75.
Ah.
But I did manage to get a planning degree from USC School of Architecture and the School of Public Administration, so it all worked out for the best.
Fight on. Madam City Attorney.
On the issue of park fees, we've had two briefings from city staff on two major increases in impact fees. One related to sewer connection fees, where we saw 38% increase in connection fees for single-family dwellings and a 75% increase in sewer connection fees for multifamily. The proposed park fee is a 50% increase over the previous amount. Now, in both cases, I think there was like a six-year gap in between staff updates of those impact fees, and when we get into an economic condition like we're in now where we have inflation, inflation, supply chain issues, and a lot of economic disruption, you know, a six-year gap creates a drastic increase and a severe, significant financial impact to any residential project. So we would make a request of you that, you know, if possible, if the staff could evaluate the need for these periodic increases on a more frequent basis, maybe not every year, maybe every two years, or in the case of some unusual economic condition, we would really appreciate that. I think what it's resulted in is many applicants have gone through the process, paid their fees, and the city has ended up under-collecting, you know, for park facilities over a fairly long period of time. Guy that comes in the week after the new fee goes into effect, all of a sudden, he's looking at a huge increase compared to the guy that was there last week. So that would be our request. We also, I think, would like to work with your staff in the future on alternatives to the impact fee approach, because construction costs are definitely going up dramatically, and we recognize the need for an adjustment. But there may be some ways to privatize the construction. I'm not sure every subdivision can afford to do its own park facilities, but I think we'd like to explore ways of allowing the development community to participate in the construction, because we typically can do it less than the city can unless prevailing wages trigger. So those are kind of our comments, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide input to you. But no need to pull it off of the consent calendar, because we support the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Demahowski, and thank you for your investment in our community and to all the developers. We need all of you to continue to invest in our growing community, and we will continue to be business-friendly to all of you. Thank you so much.
And we hope to maybe see some of these future Stanford economists come back here and tell us how to make a profit in the homebuilding business under California's regulatory system.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearing? Okay. Yeah, I will do that. So nobody wishes to remove the item? Would you like to comment? Councilmember Freeman.
I just wanted to comment on Mr. Demahowski's point. As you know, Castle Cook, we always built the parks, and we built nicer parks for less money, absolutely no question about it. It's maybe 20% cheaper or something if you have the developer. However, there is, before I came to Bakersfield in Southern California, it was common where we had to have the developers get together and jointly fund the parks for greater development, or they didn't get built, or we couldn't get a tentative map approved. We had to show how we would put the park in by working together. There's nothing stopping us from, you know, having an ordinance like that, that, you know, developers, you guys have to get three or four to get together, that it's been done many, many times. And if you all have these tracks around it, you're going to fund this park, because the city can't build them affordably anymore. It helps your marketing a lot, and that park goes in earlier upfront, but it is a known practice in other cities, so we wouldn't be doing anything new if we considered that in Bakersfield for the future. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. At this time, consent calendar, public hearings, items 8A through B is closed. Vice Mayor.
I have moved adoption of the consent calendar, public hearings.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
New business item 12A, 2025 regular city council meetings, department budget presentations and hearings calendar.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Mayor and council, this is our annual adoption of calendar. We have looked at dates that we're aware of for things like League of Cities. I will say, unfortunately, the League of Cities changed their date for next year after we had already looked at our calendar, and there is the opportunity to still attend, but the League of Cities conference is the same week as a council meeting. Beyond that, though, we have made as many accommodations as we can to have this calendar be consistent as we have with other years, and it is available for your action.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding this item?
Mayor Go, no speaker cards have been received for this item.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Moved adoption of item 12A.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Arius.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to flag one potential challenge for the future representative representing the city on LAFCO. In early December, LAFCO is going to move approval on their calendar for next year, and there's some consideration of potentially having it on the second and fourth Wednesdays. It has been moved and historically been on the first and third Wednesdays, from my understanding, but there is some interest amongst that group and staff to potentially make a conflict with ours. So I just wanted to flag that. Currently, the vice mayor and myself serve on LAFCO, but that's potentially going to change in this coming year. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. So you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers and members of the public, you know, it's hard to ask people to imagine what would have been had we not done anything, but I'm going to ask all of us to imagine, where would we be without the Clean City Initiative in our city? They do a tremendous job each and every day cleaning up all of this trash and bulky waste on city right away. They do a fantastic job, and we can look at many other cities in the state of California to see what happens when you don't have a program like CCI. It's disgusting, frankly, but I'm thankful for our program. There is one item that I'd like us to review and see a potential tweak. We have a number of vacant lots in Bakersfield's urban core, in East Bakersfield and Southeast Bakersfield, and oftentimes, these vacant lots become dumping grounds for bulky waste and lots of trash. And in fact, I could point to many different examples, three, as a matter of fact, on Nile Street in East Bakersfield, that have become chronic nuisances with regard to trash and accumulation of bulky waste. I think it's really important that we clean this up and that we deploy our CCI teams to get a handle on it. And I know there's some issues with code enforcement and the process of noticing the property owner, but I think that above any of that should come the health and safety of our community. And it really breaks my heart to see so many of our family members and children on the east side who have to walk to school, walk to work, and walk through little dumps each and every day. It brings down the neighborhood, it sends a signal that there's urban decay, and it does not get us to where we want to be in terms of a clean city. So I'm going to make a referral tonight that staff take a harder look at the Clean City Initiative's scope, and that we address this issue with these vacant properties and we, excuse me, vacant, this vacant land, but then we also look at our chronic nuisance property ordinance and see how we might apply that to vacant land as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
I just want, I noticed we approved tonight a piece of equipment, I believe when I looked it up, a shredder, I don't know what a shredder is, but it was a $995,000 shredder. And I wanted to ask, was this, is this, was the shredder, well, first I'd like to know what it is, but next, is that a, in the solid waste, was that always an electric? We have this mandate, all equipment's be electric. Was that always an electric, or did we switch from some other, you know, gas, whatever, natural gas, to electric for this new piece of equipment?
To answer your first, or sorry, honorable mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, this piece of equipment is at Mount Vernon. Every piece of equipment out there outside of yellow iron has been electric from day one, that's how the whole site was designed. This shredder focuses on more of the curbside processing to break things down finer before we run through our chromo screens and get it ready to compost in our windrows. So the shredder...
So the shredder is very vital to the facility as we're trying to build more redundancy out there. Without the redundancy, when we lose equipment to failure, because sometimes like a metal bar could get snuck in there and damage a very expensive piece of equipment like this, it could create a backlog and backlog sit and they could combust. So that's why we needed the shredder tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. It's just an expensive piece of equipment. I didn't know what shredder was. But it did raise the issue. From last meeting, we approved our first electric. And it was probably, you know, 20% more than a regular 150. But given, the mandate is that every vehicle, I guess, in the fleet has to be electric by 2032, 2035, what's that year?
I believe it's 2035. There's different benchmarks we have to meet to get to that point. I would also just advise it's not necessarily EV, it's zero emissions.
Okay. Is there anything that zero emissions?
Hydrogen could be a possibility.
Oh, if we have, okay, not a lot of those, but great. I think we, since that, you know, we only have one stream of revenue. We're not going to ever have any more. We've got sales tax, property tax, and we won't get another measure in, I don't think, passed for a long time. So we have a fixed revenue stream and we have costs outside of control that are going up and up and up and up, which means other things are going to have to be cut and cut and cut to balance. And so we're going to have a challenge, or you folks are going to have a challenge in the future of where do we cut to meet these mandates? We ought to put together a forecast. It would not be that hard. Of all the equipment, we'll have to get rid of and replace with electric at the price the electric will be versus what business as usual would have been, what the premium we're going to pay. Because otherwise, it would have been in the budget anyway, as business as usual. But there's a premium, maybe it's 30% or something. And we have thousands of, I don't know if you have thousands, hundreds, if not thousands, of vehicles, some of which are huge garbage trucks. I mean, which could be million-dollar pieces of equipment also. Where they cost a half a million, now they'll be a million in the future. Plus, there's all sorts of much more expensive maintenance, repairs, workshops. I think it's quick and dirty, but you do need to do a forecast to say, well, how much is this going to take each year? More than we're, you know, would have spent? Is it 20 million? Is it 30 million a year? Just so we start thinking about it and start thinking, okay, are there any other place we'd be more efficient? Because we will be facing this burden, cost burden, and we'll be having to decrease other things. And it's better to look forward and plan when you have this. It's basically a tax, massive new tax being put on the people in Bakersfield. And it's going to cost real cash. So, you know, I'd like, I don't know how soon you can do that. I don't want a great detail. It would be, it's a, you know, the best guess. But, and if you can get it done by the end of the year, fine. If it takes another month, that's okay. I may not be here, but I'll listen. I just think the public and our council needs to know as we start budgeting that we're just like, our pension thing, what is it, 25 or 30 million extra this year goes to 35, the next year goes to 40, the next year, is eating up roads, sewers, all the public funds. Now, we have another big one that's going to start eating those up, but we have no increase in taxes. So we're going to be challenged. And I just think it's good to start preparing for the future and being aware of it. And maybe, may someone have a creative solution? Or maybe we can lobby Sacramento with some other cities that can you back this up a little bit? I would think other cities would be pulling their hair out saying, let's go petition for an extension of this thing. Let's do something so we don't cause all these cities to go bankrupt.
Councilmember Freeman, Mayor and council, your thinking is good and it's consistent with many others. There have been a few bills that have been proposed last year and this year to delay. They haven't, you know, made it all the way through, but we expect to make another run next year with a coalition to try and at a minimum delay this. We also actually expect that there may be even legal, you know, challenges to some of these mandates. And there may be, you know, other, even, you know, a federal direction on this topic. So we're going to fight it and try and delay. We do actually have some preliminary estimates. Our fleet manager has done some good math around how many vehicles do we think are going to, you know, we're going to need to do to get that first 50% mandate and then the 75% versus the 100% fleet mandate. And so I think we can actually pull that information together fairly reasonably because they have been running some of those numbers, at least for the next couple of years, of what we think the additional cost will be.
Okay, one follow-up. Do private contractors have the same mandate as all the cities and public entities? For example, if we, if we, if half the city garbage trucks are ours, but the other half are private contractor, do they all have to convert to electric garbage trucks by this date?
I believe they are, but I would like to confirm that for you, but.
And is it the same of anything we subcontract out? If we have, somebody do maintenance on a park, do they all of a sudden have to get all their equipment changed out? I mean, this ripples all the way through every, I don't know how you even administer it, but I'm just wondering, you know, how deep does this mandate go? Because we do privately contract out quite a bit of work and are probably moving towards doing more and more of that to be able to, we just said, let's privately contract out the parks, didn't we? So we can afford to have parks. But if those people have to convert their fleets to all-electric bulldozers and everything, well, that may kill all the things we would have had anyway.
Just, you are correct. Yes, we do contract a lot of services that use heavy equipment that could be impacted. I would like to use some more time to confirm who is impacted by the regulations. The other thing I will add, though, is we do have some money already set aside in this year's capital improvement program to do what you had mentioned earlier, to develop a long-term plan. So we're actually in the process of, right now, of going through a selection process for a consultant to help us with the planning that hit along the markers you recommended.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I received some correspondence from one of my constituents, and it's a topic that I've been talking about. And he asked me, he's an older gentleman, he's in his 80s, he's not able to attend these meetings. And so he sent this email and he asked me if I would read it to you all. I think it's important that you hear from his perspective because we've had a lot of debate on this issue and that is the traffic calming issue. His name is Mr. Carl Elliott. He's lived in Bakersfield since 1950. He was an architect and is still working part-time. And he has reasonable, a reasonable background and knowledge of being an architect, of planning, city planning and that type of thing. But as I said, he's not mobile at this time. So he says, "Councilmember Gray, I am gravely concerned that Public Works is restriping many main and secondary streets and eliminating 33% capacity when they take one lane of traveled way and convert it to a bicycle lane. Please, please stop this travesty before it goes further. Who is behind this move and why? Bakersfield does not need these bicycle dedicated streets because there is no demand and very few use them. How many users have you seen or has anyone seen? Please act to stop this. Thank you, Carl Elliott." So Carl, I'm honoring you by that and I appreciate you sending that correspondence to me. And then the second thing is, I just want to commend City Manager Clegg and Mr. Rick Anthony for getting involved. I brought that referral before the council about a month ago. Mr. Ed Gady had brought it to our attention. He had been trying to get these flags done in the city. And you all got right on it. They're beautiful. You're on the front page of the newspaper. I wish they'd had his picture standing there with you because he is the one who has been behind all this. But I thank you for getting on that and those flags. Can you give me a date when they're actually going to be going up, Mr. Anthony?
They're up.
Oh, they're up? Then, oh, good. I haven't driven down Truxton yet, so I didn't see. I've been gone for two weeks, so I apologize. So they're up and they're ready and all the celebrations that we've got coming up, December 7th and so forth. So thank you. I think that's just a huge, I enjoyed talking to these vets tonight. Kern County is just an amazing city to honor our vets. And so thank you for getting that done. They're beautiful. I was really, really impressed with what I saw in the newspaper because I haven't been around. So thank you. Okay, God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. And with Veterans Day coming up and the celebration of our veterans on the Avenue of Our Heroes, let's adjourn at 6:32 in their honor. Thank you. And student, VC student, thank you so much for being here. You stuck out the whole meeting and just tell Professor Kim that you came back for the second meeting. So thanks.